Please rise for the Fledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its cause.
May you have a busy day. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Councilmember Fitch.
Here.
Councilmember Gray.
Present.
Councilmember Clancy.
Here.
Councilmember Trachis.
Present.
Councilmember Harder.
Here.
Mr. Presiding Officer, you have a form.
Very well, is there a motion for approval of the Journal of the Meeting of July 2, 2019?
So moved, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries, July 2, 2019, Journal is approved. We have no bid openings this evening, so we will move to communications.
Mr. Presiding Officer, we have no tax compromises this evening, so we'll move to zoning matters. Under zoning matters, item number one, 3rd District.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. So ordered.
Moving on to road and bridge matters, sir. Item number one, 1st District.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
And moving on to other communications, sir. Item number one, all districts.
Receive and file, same motion through item number three, and that will be the order.
Item number four, 3rd District.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. So ordered.
Item number five, 3rd District.
Receive and file. So ordered.
Item number six, 5th and 6th Districts.
Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number seven.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number eight, 7th District.
Receive, file, and the agreement be approved as recommended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number nine, 1st, 2nd, 3rd, 4th, and 6th Districts.
Receive and file, and that will be the order.
Item number 10, 6th District.
Receive, file, and the change of managing officer be approved as requested. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 11.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation and refer to the council as a committee of the whole. And that will be the order.
Item number 12.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, same motion through item number 19, and that will be the order.
Item number 20, 3rd and 6th Districts.
A moment, please. Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. So ordered.
Item number 21, 6th District.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, same motion for item number 22. That will be the order.
Item number 23, 7th District.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. So ordered.
Item number 24.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, same motion for item number 25, and that will be the order.
Item number 26, 4th District.
Start from the order of business, please.
So ordered.
Moving on to the add-ons, Mr. Presiding Officer. Under other communications, we have item number one, 4th District.
Receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number two, 5th District.
Receive, file, and the appointment be approved as requested.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number three.
Receive, file, hold on the order of business, and refer the matter described to the Ethics Committee, and that will be the order.
County Executive.
Thank you, Ernie. I'd like to start off with some promising news for residents of Wellston. Last week, I informed the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development that I did not agree with their plan to demolish all the public housing units in Wellston. HUD's decision was short-sighted, and if executed, would have harmed the community and would have depleted its residents of 20 percent of its housing stock. My intervention led to a meeting yesterday in Washington with Congressman Clay, Senators Hawley and Blunt, and Secretary Carson, and the mayor of Wellston, and a few others. And in that meeting, they agreed to a 120-day pause to come up with a plan that works for everyone. That includes reevaluating the public housing stock and determining what can be rehabbed and saved. I want to give special thanks to Congressman Clay for working so diligently on this issue, and to Mayor Griffin for pushing back against the steamrolled effort by HUD to immediately destroy all the public housing in Wellston. And I'd like to thank my staff for their expertise, and patience, and perseverance to help the process of change lead to a more positive outcome. My office will continue working closely with Congressman Clay and Mayor Griffin to work out the details and assure the residents of Wellston are treated with the respect that they deserve. Today, I was in Jefferson City with the Governor's Office and the Department of Economic Development with St. Louis County. We were there for the announcement by Bayer that they would be bringing 500 jobs to St. Louis County with an average salary of $110,000 per job. We look forward to welcoming our new residents to our region and showing off what St. Louis County has to offer. As St. Louis County continues to shine as a global epicenter of plant sciences and agriculture technology, I thank Bayer for adding to our momentum. We are proud to be Bayer's home of their North American Crop Science Division and its 5,000 employees. With business partners like Bayer, St. Louis County will continue as the economic engine of the state, and we will grow even stronger. There's no doubt that my predecessor left a dysfunctional county government in his wake. And in order to know how to rebuild, we need to first identify specifically how county government isn't working. To do so, we're identifying best practices involving outside experts to review our departments. We've completed an outside audit of Justice Services, and Lieutenant Colonel Doy has been doing an exemplary job of reworking the Justice Center and how it operates. Another area we have focused attention to is Animal Care and Control. An outside audit of animal care was completed by a team of experts. They recommended that we make a number of changes, and we've already started doing so. We've begun acting on the improvements, and we will continue those efforts in the coming weeks. I'd like to ask Spring Schmidt, our Acting Director of Public Health, to provide a quick overview of these findings and some of the actions that are already underway to improve operations.
I appreciate this opportunity. This has been, it's been a long process. This has been a five-month audit that we have gone through. This audit was done as the recommendation of the Animal Control Advisory Board, which was established by this body. And I've worked with them since October, when Animal Care and Control once again became part of the Department of Public Health, and many of the other stakeholders that you have spoken with and that I have spoken with as well, as our staff in the shelter, to learn about the functions of the shelter and where we had needs and opportunities. This audit, we asked for and received a fully, top to bottom, every sector of the entire program and all of its sort of underpinnings. There are 151 recommendations throughout this audit, everything from, you know, things that they point out that need to be immediately fixed, to this is where you can make long-term improvements structurally and systemically to really move this entire program forward towards best practices. And so, there are a wide variety of pieces in there. They are separated out into things that are to be done immediately, things that are more short-term, all the way out to medium and long-term activities that will need to take place over quite some time. We have known for some time, and certainly the council has been aware of that, and we have acknowledged before, that we see multiple structural issues at Animal Care and Control. This audit did find lots of opportunities that were about duplicative structures, things that were chaotic, off policies and procedures, which we have also talked about in this council before as well. And we've been rebuilding some of the management team. We've been inviting in additional staff positions, as well as investing in some expertise internally. We've also looked externally for additional expertise. I've been meeting and working with members of our board, members of some of our nonprofit communities, members of other shelters, to learn from them. Auditors have made multiple recommendations of other places that we could be looking for information, and we've been working with them as well. There are major findings in the audit that are around some of the goals that we have that are focused towards the way that we keep records. There are internal record-keeping errors and inconsistencies that have to be addressed, and we are inefficiently using the major system that supports the facility, which does provide them with management reporting and reporting opportunities. And all of those will require some additional retraining and some constant professional development and new policies and procedures throughout that entire piece. One of the things that is the most significant and immediate issue is the discussion between the difference of owner surrenders and owner requests for euthanasia. Because we're an open-admission shelter, many people do bring in pets and request euthanasia. At some point in the past, and I don't entirely know when, a decision was made that all owner surrenders would check a box on the form at intake that said that they agreed to an ORE, which is an owner request for euthanasia. That does mean that if euthanasia is eventually performed, that it would not be considered a shelter decision. That is not calculated according to the national standard. That is a finding in the audit. However, that was also a finding by, we've had a member of our senior leadership team that's been meeting with the senior management over at the shelter to rebuild that team, to facilitate them having discussions about their euthanasia process. And so, they did also identify that that was an issue, and the senior leadership member brought it back to me, and I authorized changing it. And the procedures were changed, the form was changed, staff was retrained in early June. And so, that structure, but that was before that I knew that this was an audit finding. So, I do accept that that was, in fact, the case. I didn't know that it was an audit finding at the time that we changed that decision in order to make sure that it was clear for people who were coming into the shelter. And it's been confusing for staff, and it will continue to be supported by the senior leadership team, that it's our expectation that it'll be calculated according to the way that the national standard is. It will make the reported euthanasia rate by the shelter look higher, not because I expect them to be euthanizing any more animals, but because they will be reporting it accurately, regardless of what the number is, regardless of what the structural issues are. We have to face them, and we have to figure out how to address them. And that's been difficult with as many things that there are in the shelter that need to be moved forward. There are issues around the way that we do behavior assessments. There are issues around the amount of time that we have to spend with animals, and a lot of the things are about inefficiencies. There will be lots of things that will be necessary as far as staff retraining, policies and procedures that have to be worked. We worked from start to finish. We have worked with members of our board, have made several recommendations to me, as well as some of our external stakeholders, about how we could provide some additional support to the shelter for the next six to seven months to do that. So, you all will see some of those things come before you in the next few weeks to make sure that we're moving that forward. All of the models of partnership and operation and the other stakeholders that are engaged, I'm trying to meet with. I intend to just be completely honest about the things that we're seeing and the things that we're working on. It'll take time to get through some of the recommendations that are in this report, and we'll continue to work on them. The shelter is crowded. We take in a lot of animals for the size of the facility, and it's very difficult for the types of animals that we get in to have them get out. But we have to make sure that the staff at the shelter are trained and motivated and understand the sense of urgency that I feel that we should have about moving animals outside of the shelter and returning them, having a live-release rate for as many animals as possible, through adoption, through returning animals to their owners, through transfers to other rescues, and all of the other opportunities available at our disposal. And that's the expectation that I have for them. So, I find this audit to be fair. For the things that I have observed and the conversations that I've had with others, things that I've been reported from the staff, there have been some things that have already been adjusted. There will be more. We created a website in which we'll report the completion of audit recommendations on an ongoing basis. And per the council's request, we will also be reporting back to you all as well, the statistics of the shelter as we continue to make changes and move forward.
Councilmember Fitch. What is the status on the selection of a new director?
So, I had a panel of 10. We were not successful in selecting a director. I included several members of the board and other external stakeholders, my HR manager. We did a national search. We had several candidates that we went through. There were some candidates that came from other locations with significant history in this space that I would say also had some very problematic paths in terms of their operations as well, and we felt like that was difficult. We did get a lot of other candidates who had not had the experience in operating a shelter at that level of leadership of our size, who we did feel like were people with sort of very much the right heart and some of the compassionate attitude, but that we were concerned about the size and scale. And so, the full panel decided that we would go back out again. And so, I'm meeting with my board on Thursday, and we'll finalize, again, the opportunity for changing up what we were looking for for a director to see if we can draw a different pool.
Are you not getting someone because of the pay, or what's the issue?
So, pay wasn't particularly the issue. I will say that I think it's a difficult field at this level. Several of the people that we drew were from other, you know, national agencies that had been, several of them had been terminated from other agencies for other issues as well. And the entire panel, including several of my board members, said that they felt like it was better to not hire a potentially poor director. We are talking about whether or not we could rework the director position to include someone who was more interested in potentially a turnaround opportunity, as opposed to sort of a long-term stable manager, which is what we had predominantly looked for. And see if we can word the job description slightly differently to see if we can draw a different pool.
Okay, thank you.
It was tough.
Anyone else? Councilmember Harder. The statistics on the euthanasia.
Yes.
You were saying that under the previous administration, it sounded like they were suppressing those numbers because you filled out a card, and then that card kind of went in the drawer, and it was never counted. And a lot of those euthanasia were people, like you say, that surrendered and were forced to check a box whether they wanted their pet to be euthanized or not, but the only way we would accept them back then was for them to check the box. Is that correct?
That is my understanding of what was happening. And I don't know if it was, I don't know how many, because I can no longer, I can't separate at this point who came in and surrendered an animal not for euthanasia and who came in and surrendered an animal for euthanasia. I do know that all of the intake forms and the recording from the beginning of last month forward will make a distinction between an owner surrender and an owner request for euthanasia.
So, like you said, in the future, those numbers will probably go up until things level out?
The reported rate will go up because it will be accurate.
Okay. And were those pets then taken directly in and put in a certain area, then euthanized the next day?
No. No, actually, they weren't. Most of what I have seen over the course of the last eight and a half, nine months has been that animals were held. And sometimes they were put up for adoption, and many were also given out to rescues, but many animals were held for too long. One of the other findings across the audit is that we do hold animals in the shelter for about twice as long as most other shelters do, which is where the sense of urgency that we've been communicating to staff really needs to come into play.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Anyone else?
Appreciate your honesty and transparency around this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything further, Mr. County Executive?
Yes. Finally, I'd like to mention a letter, oh, thank you, Spring, by the way, yes. Mention a letter that I'm sending to the Board of Equalization tomorrow. This is the Board that hears property tax assessment appeals. The deadline for filing property tax appeals in St. Louis County was July 8. Our website was inundated with constituents attempting to meet that deadline. They were met with slow speeds, technical glitches, and at one point, short website outage. And several constituents had shared their frustrations with our office. We also found that there was not consistent messaging for the public regarding the deadline, which led to some confusion. Because of these issues, I'm requesting that the Board of Equalization accept all late appeals that have been filed, and that the online appeals process be reopened with an extended deadline. Though we may not be able to ensure that all those who are unable to file their appeals can be accommodated with this extension, I'm encouraging the Board of Appeals to engage with all the affected taxpayers and inform them what has happened. That's all that I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Page. Report a special, no, public forum.
Report a special committee.
Okay, that's it, special committees. So, we'll hold that on the order of business.
And moving on to public forums, sir, we have 22 speakers this evening.
Okay. So, we have 22 speakers tonight, and we have 60 minutes. Math doesn't work. But so, what I would remind all of you that are going to speak, that we have a three-minute rule that's in effect, and we would appreciate your efforts to stay within the three minutes. Obviously, as you've known, my habit and my predecessor's habit, we're going to give you some grace on that. But I would appreciate your being conscious of the timeframe we have, and try to keep your remarks as close to three minutes as possible. So, with that, we'll proceed.
Yes, sir, and I will call each speaker and announce the following speaker, too, so they can be ready.
Very well.
So, the first speaker this evening is Bill Coleman, followed by Ken Meyer.
My name is Bill Coleman. I live in 6th District in St. Louis County. I'm here to speak in the proposed ordinance of mending Chapter 717, Title 6, SLCRO, 1974, changes. In looking at the county district maps, which I have copies, you notice it appears that District 6 is about 95 percent unincorporated. Based upon that information, I feel that this proposal would be unconstitutional. This appears to me to be yet another attempt at a Better Together program that becomes better for someone, but not District 6. I read in a post that Wellston is trying to demolish some buildings. I thank you, Mr. Page, for what's going on. Hopefully, this will solve some of those problems. Ms. Clancy is reported to have said that since the Michael Brown event, the county wants to have more Section 8 housing, but with less restrictions. And what she proposes will only affect the unincorporated St. Louis County District 6. District 6 is a homeowner from that district. We are opposed to that change. This is my opinion. It is poor folk jury-mandering. This is not racist, but rather a plan to move folks to another area, and along the way, it just might change the makeup of political preference. One of the large property owners in St. Louis County's Section 8 housing that lives in sunny California is $1 million in arrears of the property tax because he cannot make enough money to pay his taxes. I am retired, and my property taxes a load, but I can't get by without paying. Why would you want to relocate all these folks so far from their homes? No friends, no churches, no cemeteries. Why don't Wellston and the other affected areas solve their problem and provide more and better housing for the folks they are displacing? Moving a problem does not solve it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Ken Meyer, followed by Bill Newcomb.
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is Ken Meyer. I'm a resident of St. Louis County, 4327 Colony Garden. I'm here this evening to speak in opposition to Councilperson Clancy's recommendation, or bill, I guess. And I would ask a couple questions. Number one, as the previous speaker indicated, about 98 percent of Councilman Clancy's district is incorporated. And as I understand it, the law would, the ordinance that you were talking about, would apply to unincorporated areas. I would ask the question of the councilman whether or not she has contacted the housing authorities of Clayton, Ladue, Richmond Heights, Webster Groves, and a number of other cities, whether they would be willing to also abide by the ordinance. And if not, then it should be tried there first before it is extended to the 6th District, which over 98 percent of it is unincorporated. And in my opinion, unfair at best. So, I would hope that the rest of the council will take that into consideration because we want our freedom, and we do not want to mandate rules. And if I understand correctly, no credit check would be done once the vouchers, Section 8, would be accepted. And to me, you would have people living in homes, apartments, complexes, that maybe couldn't even afford to stay there to begin with. I thank the council for listening.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Bill Newcomb, followed by Yolanda Henderson.
Good evening. I'm Bill Newcomb. I live in an unincorporated area near Brief Core. I'm opposed to the Clancy-proposed relating to the sale and rental property that would redefine lawful sources of income to include Section 8 and other subsidy programs. I do not believe the county government should be imposing rules that should be left to the free market and property owners to decide. Income sources acceptable to property owners should be their choice, since they are the bearer of all the risks. In effect, you would be turning all the property in unincorporated St. Louis County into Section 8 housing. This is an application of income sources that should be included in all of the incorporated cities, as well as unincorporated areas. Applying the law equally through the county would be more equitable. Ms. Clancy lives in a community that will not be impacted, and it bothers me when lawmakers want to impose rules on others but exclude themselves from the consequences of those rules. There's a push for the so-called Better Together merger for the city and the county, yet here we are trying to enact laws that will anger and separate citizens and communities. This is totally unfair and unequal treatment of citizens and businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker is Yolanda Henderson, followed by Jean Hutchins.
Good evening, everyone. I'm here to address the look of my area. I know we don't have a county council person in District 1 right now, but the grass is really, just really bad. They cut it on Saturday. They did a lousy job. They missed a lot of spots. They left the grass. They took a big old dozer, I mean bulldozer, and just cut the grass in this little bitty old spot. And they, St. Louis County just got through with a project on Hoard and Luxon Hunt. I want to know when that grass is going to get cut. It has not been cut all year. All the islands are really bad. I want my area of North County to look like South County. And I need to know, who do I need to speak with to get the areas cut? And number two is, we do have an island that's on Jenny Station Row near the White Castles. I want to know who owns that. I have went to Jenny's, and it is so tall. It's taller than me. I know I'm short, but it's so tall. And I just want the look, you know? I know we got the thing saying, hey, you know, North County, St. Louis County is behind in grass cutting. But I need to know who do I need to speak with to get that done?
Well, I think that you can try to contact the Department of Public Works.
Okay.
They have what's called a Problem Property Unit.
Okay.
That would at least take your information and take a look at it. That's a place to start, so I would suggest you contact the- That's a place to start, so I would suggest you contact the Department of Public Works. And if that doesn't get you any information you need, you contact my office, and I'll help you.
Okay.
Okay.
And I would like to thank you for answering my question. Thank you.
There's another option that you could remember in the future is that if you call 311.
311, okay, not 211.
311 will connect you to St. Louis County, and you can tell them their problem, and they'll triage you to the right person to try and help you solve it. And as you see opportunities for problem properties along the way, if you just tell your friends, call 311, and we'll get somebody on it.
Forgot about that.
Thank you, because I've been receiving a lot of calls, what are they going to do, what they going to do? And again, thank you for both answering my question.
Thank you for coming.
Next speaker is Jean Hutchins, followed by Derek Hakey.
I'm Jean Hutchins. I live at 9447 Radio Drive in the 6th District. I too am speaking about Councilperson Clancy's bill. Freedom is the ability, the liberty, to make a decision and make it effective. And the idea of a person who wants to disposition their property, real estate, by running it, should be able to make sure that the renter, respective renter, is qualified. Qualified meaning the ability to make that rent. And an obvious question is, what is the source of income? And for this legislation to take effect completely does not make any sense. It just defies logic. It will, if it passes, set the stage to force Section 8 housing on anybody who wants to be a landlord and rent their home out. In plain words, this is just a travesty, and I think it is shameful to come up with this kind of idea that takes away liberty. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Derek Hakey, and I'm not sure if I'm pronouncing that right. I apologize, followed by Tim McAtier.
I'm used to it. Good evening. I'm here on the behalf of Five Star Markets tonight. The reason I'm here is that the Health Department has refused to grant them a tobacco permit to sell tobacco out of their proposed location out in St. Anne. They've been given a alcohol permit and all of their occupancy permits necessary to run their business. However, the Health Department has refused to give them the tobacco permit. In this location, they're basically saying that there's a school within 300 foot, feet of their building. However, there are three other stores, a Walgreens, a smokers' discount smoke shop, and a gas station that all sell tobacco products adjacent to their property. St. Anne has also approved a special use permit for the Five Star Markets. However, again, the St. Louis County Department of Health has denied it. And I'm here before you deny it to ask you if you would facilitate that, their permit.
You're not going to get an answer tonight, I can tell you that.
Well, when can I get one?
I think your petition and effort should be directed at the Department of Health.
Okay.
Assuming they have the discretion, and I'm not sure that they do.
They do not. They actually told me to come here.
Exactly. That's exactly right.
Is there a limitation on our ordinance about new tobacco licenses within, if you're in a bit of schools, are they being treated differently than existing licenses?
It was in 1995 that the ordinance came, or 94 the ordinance came down. All three of these locations are established since this ordinance came down.
You artfully did not answer my question.
Right.
Are you an attorney?
Uh, yes.
Now, I would say you're a great advocate for your client. I don't mean to disparage your profession. You artfully did not answer my question. Is there a distinguished, is there a difference between new and existing licenses, how the county health department makes this decision?
I am not sure.
Okay. I would go back and look there and see if you can get an answer to your question.
All right.
And is your client, Five Star Market, sell vaping products as well?
I believe so.
Yeah. I think that's subject to a new ordinance, so good luck to you.
All right. Thank you. Thanks for coming.
Next speaker is Tim McAtier, followed by Ellen Lawrence.
Good evening. My name is Tim McAtier. I'm the president of Inmate Calling Solutions, who has been the jail phone provider for Department of Service, Department of Justice since 2007. So I'm here tonight to, I know I have limited time, I'd like to talk about two significant issues with the current RFP and recommendation for award. The first of which is the revenue. So from what limited information we have received thus far, there was a letter that went to the council to, it seemed as justification for their decision to award to another provider. Everything in that was apples-to-apples even with our proposal, because it was all required in the RFP. So we all had to do the same thing. There was only one differentiation in that letter, and that was the commission that the county would receive on the revenue. So with our proposal, we bid 76.5% of every dollar that's done in inmate calling or video visitation goes back to the county. The selected providers' proposal did 76, or 77%, slightly above, but only 25% on video visitation. Now, funds are limited. Every dollar that families choose to spend or inmates spend on video visitation is going to be one less dollar they're going to be able to spend on phone calling. So you have a scenario here where our financial offer to the county was far superior. Every dollar that goes, that is spent on either service, it's irregardless, the county gets the same 76.5% commission. On the other hand, the other proposal, they only get 25%. The second issue is this. We all had the same rates of use that the inmates and their families paid for conversation, 21 cents a minute and 35 cents a minute on the video visitation. And why did we have the same rates? Because they were required and set in the RFP. The rates were not bid competitively. It may not sound like too much of an issue until you start looking at the commissions. So 21 cents a minute an inmate's going to spend to pay for a phone call to talk to their loved one. Of that 21 cents, 16 cents of it is going back to the county in a commission. So really, the service is only costing five cents, and 16 cents of what the inmates paying is going back to the county. So the opportunity there is, most places, most facilities will set a fixed commission rate and say, this is what we want per month in revenue on the phone contract. And what you have to bid is the lowest calling rate. So tell me the lowest calling rate you guys can get. If the county, in this example, if the county were willing to forego commissions, inmates could be paying as low as five cents a minute. Instead, they're paying 21, because the RFP wasn't set that way. It was set at 21 cents, and tell me the highest commission you can give me. And as a result, they're getting 16 cents, and that's why the inmates paying 21 cents a minute. Video visitation, same issue, 35 cents. They could be paying as low as eight cents. Take 76.5% off of 35 cents, they could be paying eight cents a minute. Sorry I went over. Thank you very much for your time and attention.
Apologize for that noise, Mr. Presiding Officer. Next speaker is Ellen Lawrence, followed by Chris Struckoff.
Dr. Page and county council members, I'm Ellen Lawrence. I currently serve as the vice chair of the St. Louis Animal Care and Control Board. I'd just like to share with you a few of my thoughts, my personal thoughts, about the recently released shelter audit. Firstly, I would very much like to thank the county council for supporting the board and funding the order at the board's request. As you know, we're an advisory board, not an executive board. We can and have made suggestions touching on many of the issues raised by the audit. However, almost none of the recommendations were instituted. This was very frustrating. In my opinion, the board's primary goal is to have the shelter operate as a best practices institution. This serves both the animals and the county residents. The only way we could see this happening was to request the audit. While we understand from the beginning that it would be unflattering to say the least, it was the only way we could see moving forward toward our goal. Shining a spotlight on our problems, while unpleasant in the short run, is absolutely necessary to correct these problems and move forward in a constructive manner. The board wanted to hear the good, the bad, and the ugly about the shelter, so we can become the best practices institution that we should be. The Department of Public Health has an action plan for addressing the issues covered by the audit. I have confidence that both the DPH's Acting Director, Spring Schmidt, and Carol Baskin, the Director of Communicable Diseases, Vector and Animal Control, will follow through with this action plan. It's going to be a bumpy road. However, if you don't have a clear understanding of what's wrong, you can't fix it. Thank you again for your support and funding of this very important audit. I think it will be worth every penny you spend on it.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next speaker is Chris Struckoff, followed by Tashonda Troop.
My name is Casilda Chris Struckoff, and I live in St. Louis County, South St. Louis County, unincorporated portion of District 6. And I want to speak about a bill that would affect me. I live in an unincorporated area. It would not affect anyone that lives in a municipality, including the municipality that the person that introduced the bill lives in. She lives in an un, in a municipality. It would not affect her or those she represents. But anyhow, this bill would require the land, all landlords in unincorporated St. Louis County to accept Section 8 and other governmental assistance vouchers for all rental property, houses, apartments, et cetera. This bill is overreaching and undemocratic. It probably also is unconstitutional, and I don't, I don't think it's fair to those property owners and those that live in the area. And it should be taken to court and thought if it is enacted, because it's not fair to all the residents of unincorporated St. Louis County. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Tashonda Troop, followed by Natasha Troop.
My name is Tashonda Troop, and I live in Pine Line. The last two council meetings, I wasn't present, not because I didn't want to be here, but because this whole situation with my son's death has become extremely stressful for me. Days leading up to the June 25 council meeting, I started experiencing chest pains. I came all the way to the council meeting, but after being urged by family and friends, I went to the ER. They took some x-rays and ran some tests. My heart was fine, but was told the chest pains more than likely came from stress. The doctor then asked if I had been under any stress lately. So I had to explain that my son was found dead in the cell in St. Louis County Jail, and that I'm still trying to get answers. I'm stressed because I'm still wondering how Julia is still employed by the county before and after the deaths in the jail. Her behavior, she was not held accountable. I'm struggling to understand why the members of this council thought it was the right decision not to make others aware of the email about the abuse by a guard. Wondering why some felt it was okay to do nothing with such disgusting behavior was brought to their attention. I'm trying to be patient, but it's stressful wondering how long it will take this council and the jail to come forward with the results from the investigation they perform. The county executive page, you stated that you wanted to bring more transparency, but the county is still holding records concerning my son's death, stating the records are closed. That stresses me out the most and keep me up at night. I can't help but to wonder what's in these records that the county don't want me to see? What's in these records that the county lawyers think I can use against the county in a lawsuit? Could my son have some handwritten letters or notes? Although I appreciate and I applaud all the recent changes, I'm still wondering, can I trust this council? I want to trust you, and I want to trust this process, but withholding those records don't make it easy. This council has the power to do what's right. Use your power to do the right thing. Help eliminate some of my stress and grief, and help me find closure by giving me the records that we've been asking for. It's been 138 days since my son's death, and I'm still fighting for records.
Thank you, Ms. Troop.
Next speaker is Natasha Troop, followed by Shelley Burris.
I'm Natasha Troop. I live in 6th, 4th District, and I'm here today for various reasons. One is the most concerned is my nephew. Now, I stood here and I listened as before I asked you the question that we have so many rules for the animals. I see that you did an audit, and you paid for it, but when are we going to get the personal audit of the jail independently that you're going to pay for? You promised it, but I haven't heard it. I haven't seen it. I haven't heard nobody else speak about it. You put Lieutenant Doyle in there with no power. He's just there. He can't control the nurses. He can't do anything. They're the one killing people. We left here on break with the fourth death. Y'all still hasn't got a resolution. Y'all not doing anything. You're covering up for your employees, and you're keeping bad employees with your bad practices. You say transparent, you couldn't be transparent if we're fighting for records, things that should be automatically given. If y'all worried about lawsuits, get the right employees. Employ the right people and do the right thing by people, then you won't have to worry about trying to get employees to work for you. You can't get nobody to be a director over nothing y'all got here. St. Louis County is drowning. The more y'all take on debt and the more people that are suing you, we don't have nothing for us. What about the people that's paying taxes into the county? We're paying our lawsuit settlements for bad employees, but yet y'all are still hiding. Y'all hiding behind these desks and these badges. You're hiring people. You're not putting people in all the advisory boards that represent us. You're doing whatever you want to do as council people, and it's unfair. It's very unfair. You took away Erby's, she, where's her district? Who's monitoring for her? She's supposed to be diversity. What diversity is she running? Because I don't see it. I, I don't see, I see smoke and mirrors. So it's time now, we, we need to do something. Is we going to get another death in the next month? I just want to know. Should I prepare for another long talk and y'all waiting to see what's going to happen? So what we going to do besides nothing? And that's the only thing, we doing more for the animals than we doing for people. And they pay y'all taxes regardless if they're in jail or not. When they go buy Candy Boy's 107, you getting a tax. So it's unfair. It's very unfair. Thank you.
Next speaker is Shelley Burris, followed by Hannah Mangamuri.
Shelley Burris, unincorporated Oakville, that's District 6. I'm just going to read a little response to what so many other people spoke about tonight, the housing voucher program or bill. This bill would prohibit landlords from choosing whether to participate or not to participate in public and private nonprofit rental subsidy and assistance programs. Currently, participation is voluntary, which complies with federal and state laws. What Ms. Clancy wants to accomplish is already addressed by the Federal Fair Housing Act and the Missouri Human Rights Act. Under this bill, only unincorporated St. Louis County is affected. The rest of the 88 municipalities in St. Louis County are immune to the bill. Clearly, there will be inequities forced by this bill. I won't go listing even some of the 88 municipalities, because they've been mentioned already. It is unfair and unconstitutional to target people based on where they live and to force them to do something that others in the same county are not being required to do. And I think I'll end right there. But thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Burris.
Next speaker is Hannah Mangamuri, followed by Isora Liggins.
My name is Hannah Mangamuri. I'd like to thank the council for helping the animal shelter. My daughter loves animals a lot, and I also, I teach in a preschool, and I see the output the kids give from their pets, you know? They are, I mean, I just want to thank the council for taking up that thing. And I want to talk about, like, taking, taking people from lesser, healthier neighborhoods and putting them in a more healthier neighborhoods is not going to be a lot of help, because we are do, we've done busing for a long time, taking kids from a lower-income neighborhood and taking them to a higher income, and it has not helped, because... Because instead, if we do it in the reverse, because I say it because it works when we do it in reverse. A German-American missionary came to our town in 1842, and we were untouchable caste. And like, bless you. The representative Kamala Harris's mom is from a higher caste. So instead of asking us to be bitter against the higher caste, what he said, instead of pushing the untouchable caste to the higher caste people, what he did was, this white missionary, he built us an engineering college, built us hospitals. And finally, the higher caste people started coming into our Christian college. And I, long story short, it's shown more. Now, you know, when you say Indians in America, they stand for good engineers, good medical professionals like that. That's because we took the higher-income, higher-caste people and put them and drew them into the lower-income neighborhoods. So I live in Crestwood, and I see a push for a lot of that, to put apartments and stuff. I please request you to consider doing the reversal. Instead of taking people from less healthier, make something like coding. I wish you, they collaborated with LaunchCode, and they started a free coding program in a lesser neighborhood on King's Highway and Delmore. And it's working a lot. My kids and I, we pick up trash at a dollar store there, you know? Because I want healthier kids to go to the less healthier neighborhoods and make a difference. That would work. As a teen, I used to go to slums in India with the, with protection, with the professors and do adult education. I'm not saying it is 100%, but I'm saying that worked better. And now, Indians stand for good medical professionals, good engineers, good, good, good. So thanks again for giving me this time. And thanks again for helping the animal shelter.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Isora Liggins, followed by Jenny Agnew.
Good evening. Isora Liggins, 5320 Bermuda Road. I would like to just kind of piggyback off what the young lady had said earlier. And it is kind of disheartening when you do sit and listen to this council take into consideration the abuse of animals opposed to people. "Good evening, Executive Page and the entire council. I came before you two weeks ago expressing concern about the fraudulent documents being passed around by way of the county executive's office regarding me. I ask county executive Page to provide me the names of the people who sent this information to him. I have received no response to date. It is clear to me and others that you cannot help me if you do not know the need of help that I need. I am asking again that you forward me the names of the people who supplied this information to you. Your office should be deeply troubled by the dysfunction of St. Louis County. I am making a request that the county executive office and the county council clarify in layman terms what the people can expect from this governing body regarding bridging the racial divide, due process, equal protection, and basic fairness here in St. Louis County for all. Explain in detail your roles in servicing the people. Executive Page, a few days ago, you were interviewed by Elliot Davis, and he asked you about the difference in the Chief of Diversity responsibilities versus the Director of Diversity responsibilities. I missed your answer. Could you please explain the difference in those responsibilities?"
No, I can't help you with your question, Isora, and I won't give you the names of my staff members who researched your case on CaseNet and gave me the court filings and orders. But I will not give you the names of the employees who have been helping me. And I can't help you with your description of the...
So you can't tell me what are the responsibilities of the Chief of Diversity opposed to the Director of Diversity? You don't know what those responsibilities are?
Please direct your questions to the chair, number one. Number two, this is not a forum for you to ask questions. This is a forum for you to address the council with your concerns. And I would ask you to continue to do so.
Okay. Well, again, I would just like to say this for the benefit of the council. My worker's compensation claim was not on CaseNet. So whoever researched in the county executive's office, they didn't get that information off of CaseNet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Jenny Agnew, followed by Beth Wasserstrom. I'm sorry? Then Jenny Agnew, followed by Lynn Gober.
Good evening. I saw you last in April at the special hearing for St. Louis County Animal Care and Control. I'm the third speaker tonight to represent county, and I offer a different perspective than what Spring Schmidt and Ellen Lawrence have, as I'm a volunteer there with boots on the ground, so to speak. So I also thank you for the audit. I look forward to seeing many of the recommendations and considerations implemented. But I'm here to tell you that not much has changed since April. Dogs are still not getting out on a regular basis. And as you know, with the news of this last week, dogs are still being euthanized, and people are questioning those decisions for euthanasia. We know that dogs will be euthanized there. I'm not one person who thinks that they can all be saved in that environment. But I do think that many of the dogs who are euthanized are not being assessed correctly. There is a dog that was euthanized today named Cameo. She's a dog who was removed from one of the rooms that volunteers have access to. She had an evaluation, and shortly thereafter, she was euthanized. She was on the rescue list a couple of weeks ago, but not many efforts had been made to move her out of the shelter. Volunteers were unaware of any issues with her. Volunteers had zero issues with her. So I appreciate that the changes that the audit recommend will take some time. I come from the world of academia where time doesn't matter. Time does matter to these animals. And it mattered to Cameo, because today, her time was up. So I'm here as a reminder that these are living beings who continue to be affected by the way St. Louis County Animal Care and Control is run. And I guess I'll be back at the next meeting to talk about the next animal that's euthanized. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Lynn, either Gober or Gober. I'm not sure I'm reading that correct. Followed by Bob Mahachek.
Good evening. First, I'd like to start. I want to thank everyone who cares for these dogs, and I want to thank you for the audit. It is no secret, St. Louis County has been under scrutiny for some time. Lately, the death of Thor, a dog brought into county by Kay Lynn. Thor was euthanized two weeks after Kay brought him to county. He was labeled aggressive. We have video of Thor. He was not aggressive. He was healthy when he was brought into county, later to be found with kennel cough, aggressive behavior, and we were told he bit a staff worker. We do not believe this. Spring speaks of change, but this was one week ago. I have researched some stats and found, on average, four dogs are euthanized every week. This is approximately 208 dogs per year. Spring Schmidt has quoted, has been quoted as saying, "We are lower than the national average. Can we not do better? January 2018, 291 dogs were euthanized. When asked if dogs are euthanized for space, this was denied. I don't believe this. I understand the stress the workers are under, so I ask, why not put someone in place with knowledge of shelter dogs and the extreme stress they are under? A friend of mine, Trish McMillan, an animal behaviorist who has spoken throughout the U.S., is coming to St. Louis in August. I can get the information if you request it. She is speaking on aggressive behavior and to tell the difference between fear and real aggression. The cost is $275 per person. Perhaps county could sponsor their employees to attend? I truly believe employees would benefit from this class and Trish's knowledge of shelter dogs. Question, what is the difference between aggression and behavior? What type of behavior warrants a dog to die? Is it stress, diarrhea, kennel cough, fear, age? This is a play on words to hide the truth. Both of these are listed as reasons for euthanasia. They are both the same. St. Louis County Animal Control is under fire, and people are not turning a blind eye any longer? O R E. Owner requested euthanasia. When someone surrenders a dog, they're encouraged to check this box without knowledge of what it truly is. So many believe their animal will be adopted out. This is not the case. This is another way to cover up, to cover the mind-blowing numbers of euthanasia at county. To quote Gandhi, "The true measure of any society can be found in how it treats its most vulnerable. The animals, like children, are at your mercy. This makes them our most vulnerable. The previous administration was at fault, but I don't feel the whole blame lies here. Something must change here." I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Bob Mahachek, followed by Tom Sullivan.
Good evening. I'm Bob Mahachek from St. Louis County, 63128. And I'm opposed to the bill that would force property owners by law to participate in the Section Eight program. I believe some of the best-made points last time this came up were made by an individual who both grew up in Section Eight housing and now owns Section Eight housing. Two of his biggest points were, one, continue giving property owners the freedom to participate or not; and two, for the government to make improvements in the Section Eight program itself. I recently spoke with a person who owns 10 pieces of property in the city with four of them being Section Eight. He echoed the need for the program itself to be better managed. He said it can take up to five weeks to get a unit approved for the program. When he rents property to a non-Section Eight tenant, he tries to turn it in under two weeks, and that delay costs hundreds of dollars. Another thing he doesn't like is that he won't be told until the very end if they'll approve the rate he is asking for. After over a month, they may say at the final inspection, "We will approve you for $720, not the $750 you're asking for." So after hundreds of dollars in delays already, a government bureaucrat, not the free market, decides what a property owner will be paid. He also mentioned it seems that some of the program inspectors, his words, "Just want to mess with you." The example he gave related to annual follow-up inspections. He was frustrated over what he deemed to be, again, his words, "A bunch of nitpick garbage." So to be clear, the Section Eight program requires annual re-inspections, while most municipalities just require one at the time of moving in. I told the owner that someone here last time spoke of how great the program was because of the, quote, "guaranteed money." His eyes lit up, and he said guaranteed. Yeah, the government part is guaranteed, and the tenant pays the other portion. Every month, with some of my tenants, I'm chasing them down to get that rent. He then added this positive, though. He said, "In the program's defense, he didn't think it was any worse than other federal agencies he dealt with." Now, my eyes widened, and I responded, "You just told me you could spend an entire day telling me how screwed up this program was." He replied, "Oh, yeah, it's terrible, but I just don't think it's worse than any other government agencies." And yet another positive. He thought the program is so poorly run and extremely challenging to deal with that, in a way, since he's somewhat used to it, he doesn't have to deal with as much competition. In closing, the bureaucrats in the Section Eight program need to get that program in order. County residents should not be compelled by law to be in a program that can't come remotely close to the private sector. This highlights the basic philosophical difference that President Reagan expressed quite clearly, that government's first duty is to protect the people, not run their lives. And in so many cases, government is not the solution to our problem. Government is the problem. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Tom Sullivan, followed by Angie Zorich.
Mr. Presiding Officer, I have a few things to mention. I think the supplemental appropriation request by county executive Page for his office should be withdrawn. It was interesting to hear the county executive recently being interviewed by Elliot Davis about the people working in his office. In answer to one question, Mr. Page said he had only been in office for seven weeks, insinuating he still needed time to get organized. That was just my point. He still didn't know what his office needs were when he requested $600,000 more after being county executive for only two weeks. The meeting last night in North County was pretty interesting. It's easy to see why so many residents are upset. North County has been neglected by St. Louis County government for some time. Years ago, I raised the issue of Jamestown Mall declining. I considered it the best mall in the area and hated to see it slowly decline as it was so critical to North County. But I was told at council meetings by Charlie Dooley and Michael Mara not to worry, they would turn things around. It did not have to end the way it did, but there has been continual incompetence and lack of leadership. St. Louis County can't even get the weeds cut at the old place. A few weeks ago, at the committee of the whole meeting, the issue was raised of Metro wanting to close Link Markets at the Wellston and North Hanley metro stations. The idea of the markets was to have produce available in underserved areas. From the very beginning, I thought it was a bad idea for several reasons. But the Missouri Foundation for Health put up $584,000 to finance the operation. It was a bad investment. At various times, I would go by the Wellston Market. I never once observed a single person buying anything. In recent weeks, it has been closed. I assume it's permanent. When I parked at the MetroLink station in North Hanley to take MetroLink to the airport, I have observed the market there. Only once have I ever seen anyone buying anything. After looking at 116 pages of emails on the matter received from the county executive's office, it seems Metro CEO Talby Roach has questioned the management of the markets. Some think that the market should continue. They seem misinformed. One thing never mentioned is Thice Farms and Greenhouses. They have been in business since 1885 and carry over 50 different fruits and vegetables. They also have watermelons and pumpkins in season. Thice Farms has 10 acres at its main facility in St. Louis County. Where is it located? 4215 North Hanley, right across the street from Metro's North Hanley Station, which means it's also across the street from the Link Market. Yet, the whole idea of the markets was to provide healthy produce to underserved areas. Clearly, the premise was faulty. In addition to being more convenient to those in the neighborhood, Thice is open seven days a week. Out to the Wellston Link Market, there's a sale-out grocery store just a few minutes away. The Link Markets didn't work. It makes little sense to continue with them. Thank you, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Thank you, Tom.
Next speaker is Angie Zorich, followed by LeAnn Frisch.
Hello. I, Angie Zorich, Oakville. I came, as you know, I sued the county police department. I don't really want to go into details about that, but Priscilla Gunn went out of that courtroom and told reporters that St. Louis County has changed policy shortly after my house was raided because my gas was turned off. That was by Problem Properties, which you're referring people who are complaining about grass. Somebody who worked for the gas company called Problem Properties and got his buddy that he worked with to come and harass me because my dog was barking. So I have an issue with Problem Properties doing anything. No offense. I mean, I think maybe there's a purpose for that, but I think there's a big problem. The one thing that I did want to say was that no policies have changed, except for the SWAT policy that if you're going to raid a house, you should pay particular attention to dogs. That's the only policy that was changed. It was taken out about 31 days after they raided my house. It was a policy. Now, it's not even a policy, because they don't have policies. They have practices. And like the jail, they're managing their own stuff. You guys probably don't have any control of that because it sounds like the police department doesn't really have control of that. The biggest reason that I came here is because they, SWAT has a, on your website, county website, SWAT serves, or I guess we want to call it TAC, serves all search warrants. If a Problem Properties office has the power to go into the county councillor's office and get a search warrant and not mention that maybe I was cooperating, that he talked to me the day before, not tell a judge that, and definitely not tell SWAT that, tell them a bunch of other stuff, maybe vilify me in federal court and say that my kids are bad. I think that's a problem. You've got a SWAT team who's not asking questions, not doing their own checking on things like that. Bottom line, I think this policy on your website, it's scary. And when my house, when I filed my lawsuit, the union, the police union people, were reporting that to the Post Dispatch, SWAT serves all search warrants. It's like a blanket SWAT policy, and I think that's a big, big problem. I checked it this morning. It hasn't changed yet. It hasn't changed yet. That's really the only thing I wanted to tell you, but now that I'm here and there's so many problems, and I have 38 seconds, the, you know, Robert Rink is the Problem Properties office who caused this $750,000 settlement, and he is also on the board, advisory board for the animal control. Are you kidding me? I mean, he knew there were dogs there. He told him there were dogs there. What did he tell him? There's a dog there, take care of it? This whole thing ties, I mean, I could go on and on, but I really, you know, I originally came here because of the jail, and I think you guys are still getting ready to vote on the phone service, and I had no idea that you were getting a 76% kickback on those phone calls. This is really sad. Lamar Catchings was on-
That's the one, sir.
Thank you.
Was on restriction because he couldn't call his mother and tell her that he was sick the last couple of months. And we're charging people 21 cents a minute? I'm sorry, but my son spent a couple of days in there and it was a lot more than 21 cents a minute.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Zorich.
Next speaker is LeAnn Frisch, followed by Bonnie Boim.
Good evening. LeAnn Frisch, University City. I don't have any prepared remarks really, because I do want to state that the audit confirms what many of us have been saying has been happening at the animal control for a decade. We're grateful that the problems are finally being acknowledged, but as people who are there every day, like Jenny has said, we have to, it is not enough to say that people who run and work in our shelters care about animals. They must put those words into actions to prove that the life of every animal in the shelter has value. And I know some of the people here are upset that a lot of people are talking about dogs or animals instead of people and feeling, but I think what some people don't realize why I've been so passionate about this topic for so many years is because our tax dollars are being spent to kill healthy, treatable animals, and they're calling it euthanasia. And euthanasia should only be used when an animal is being put out of pain and, so the reason that some of us are upset, I'm just babbling, I'm sorry. I do want to say, not rocket science, No Cal Animal Shelter Advocacy in Huntsville, Alabama is an excellent book, and we all need to read it. But people don't know what's going on at the shelter. I think Spring is willing to talk to us and is making a true effort unlike any of the previous directors in the last decade, and so we are thankful for that. We hope to have more progress, but the progress is very slow and for the animals that are there and being killed needlessly, the volunteers that are there all the time and seeing these animals, and we aren't being allowed to help them, we need more transparency, and I'm babbling, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Final speaker this evening is Bonnie Boim. Not sure if I'm pronouncing that correctly.
Hi, thank you for allowing me to speak. I just want to start by piggybacking on what LeAnn was saying and addressing the comments earlier made about how we're focusing attention and resources on the animal shelter and not on people. And the truth is that compassion is not like a pie. It's not that you take one piece and less is left for others. Compassion is like a candle, and when you light one, you can use that flame to light another. So compassion for animals and people is, in my opinion, and it's been, you know, documented, it's, they're intrinsically leaked. So the FBI has documented that people who are inclined to abuse animals are also likely to abuse people. So we don't need to shift our focus toward one or the other. We need to find the compassion and the resources to take care of everybody in the county, and to people with pets, their animals are their family members, and they are very, very important to them. I want to comment briefly on Angie Zorich's case where the SWAT team was called to her house and killed her dog, shot her in the back as she was running away from the SWAT members. No amount of money can make up for what happened to Angie's family, and her family is forever traumatized by the people that were supposed to protect her. And there needs to be follow-up action to ensure that the officers who did this are held personally accountable, and also there needs to be structural changes. Officer training for dogs needs to be implemented countywide. This happens way too often. And luckily, Ms. Zorich had the tenacity to follow through and see that justice was achieved for her family, but most people do not. Also, I do want to comment on the audit for the animal shelter. It is encouraging to see that these problems are actually seeing the light of day. It's extremely distressing about the owner requested euthanasia, where people who intended to bring animals in to be put up for adoption were coerced into saying that they were bringing those animals in to be euthanized, and then that euthanasia was not counted on the public disclosure of the euthanasia rates at the shelter. That's a major betrayal to the animals and the people of St. Louis County. I'm glad that that has finally come to light and that that policy has been changed. But obviously, there's a whole lot more work that needs to be done at the shelter. We need to get back to basics. We've been talking about dog walking for almost 10 years. Those animals have got to get out of those cages. Every animal has got to go outside several times a day, every day. They decline quickly when they're in stressful situations, and they don't even have an opportunity to eliminate out of their cage. So whatever resources need to be given to the shelter to hire more dog walkers, we need to see that happen as soon as possible. Thank you again for listening to my comments.
Thank you very much.
No more speakers, Mr. Presiding Officer.
Very well, that concludes the public forum. Then we'll proceed with introduction of bills.
Bill number 183, introduced by Councilmember Tracus and ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $528,912.50, Missouri Department of Transportation, appropriating same for support of the Commercial Motor Vehicle Enforcement Unit of the Police Department, authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents. Bill number 184, introduced by Councilmember Tracus and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute amendment to a contract with Black &amp; Beach Corporation for consulting and engineering services in connection with implementation of the emergency communication system. Bill number 185, introduced by Councilmember Tracus and ordinance authorizing the county council to execute a contract with Hepler Broom LLC to represent St. Louis County and various defendants in three lawsuits. Bill number 186, introduced by Councilmembers Fitch and Clancy, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute contracts with the cities of Kirkwood, Manchester, and University City for various waste management projects to be funded by surcharge and licensing fees collected pursuant to Section 607.610.3 of the Waste Management Code. Bill number 187, introduced by Councilmember Tracus and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute an automotive slash equipment repair contract and after three subsequent renewals with the city of Northwood. Bill number 188, introduced by Councilmember Fitch, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Metropolitan St. Louis Sewer District for reimbursement of cost of installing a storm sewer system along the east side of Sapperton Road from St. Catherine Labyrinth to Sapphire Ridge Court. Bill number 189, introduced by Councilmember Tracus and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Oates Associates Incorporated for professional engineering services related to the McKelvey Road resurfacing Phase II Project AR-1718, and authorizing the Director of Transportation to execute necessary revisions to the schedule of work activities. Bill number 190, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to grant eneasement within Spanish Lake Park to Missouri American Water Company for the relocation of a utility facility in connection with a bridge replacement project on Spanish Pond Road and to execute necessary documents. Bill number 191, introduced by Councilmember Tracus and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Minnesota Life Insurance Company, AKA Securian for Life, Accidental Death and Dismemberment Services, and Voluntary Life Services. Bill number 192, introduced by Councilmember Tracus, an ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Hyatt Legal Plans, a MetLife company, with Life State's Identity Management Services provision of optional legal services to county employees, and further authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with Prepaid Legal Services Incorporated, doing business as Legal Shield, to provide optional identity theft protection services to county employees. Bill number 193, introduced by Councilmember Fitch, an ordinance amending Title II, Chapter 204, St. Louis County Revised Ordinance since 1974, amended the retirement plans by repealing and reenacting Section 204.430 pertaining to forfeiture of benefits. Bill number 194, introduced by Councilmember Walton Gray, an ordinance finding that a certain area known as the Jamestown Mall Project area, more particularly described herein, is blighted and insanitary as defined in Section 99.320 of the Revised Statutes of Missouri, being Sections 99.300 to 99.660 inclusive, as amended the LLCRA law within the unincorporated area of St. Louis County, finding that the redevelopment of the area is necessary and in the public interest under the LLCRA law, finding that said redevelopment of the area is in the interest of the public health, safety, morals, and general welfare of the people of the county, approving the blighting study and amended redevelopment plan for the Jamestown Mall Project area prepared pursuant to Section 99.300 Revised Statutes of Missouri, sequential, finding that there is a feasible financial plan for the redevelopment of the area, finding that the use of the power of eminent domain may be necessary to enable the area to be redeveloped in accordance with the amended plan, and that the amended plan affords maximum opportunity for development of the area by private enterprise pledging cooperation of the county council and requesting various officials, departments, boards, and agencies of the county to cooperate and to exercise their respective powers in a manner consistent with the amended plan. Mr. Presiding Officer, that is all the bills.
Very well, it's moved to perfection.
Bill number 20, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Please hold.
Bill number 20 is held.
Bill number 102, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
Please hold.
Bill number 102 is held.
Bill number 169, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to hold Bill number 169, and Bill number 169 will be held.
Bill number 170, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to perfect Bill number 170. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 170 is perfected.
Bill number 171, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
I move to perfect Bill number 171. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 171 is perfected.
Bill number 172, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to perfect Bill number 172. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 172 is perfected.
Bill number 173, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to hold Bill number 173, and Bill number 173 is held.
Bill number 176, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to perfect Bill number 176. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 176 is perfected.
Bill number 177, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to perfect Bill number 177. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 177 is perfected.
Bill number 178, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to perfect Bill number 178. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 178 is perfected.
Bill number 179, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to perfect Bill number 179. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Bill number 179 is perfected.
Bill number 180, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to perfect Bill number 180. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 180 is perfected.
Bill number 181, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to perfect Bill number 181. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 181 is perfected.
Bill number 182, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move to perfect Bill number 182. Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 182 is perfected. Final passage.
Substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 136, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
I'm going to move for final passage of substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 136. Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Before I cast my vote, I just want to say that this matter's been vetted for weeks now. I'm of the position that the county executive has demonstrated the need for these funds, and it's, in my opinion anyway, that responsibility of this council to work with the executive, particularly in this time of transition, when we are trying to right the ship of government in St. Louis County. So I vote aye.
Councilmember Harder.
Yes, we've talked about this as well, and my only comment here is that I hope we can reach a consensus going into the new budget year on what is the appropriate amount for the county executive's office and for staff, and to make sure that it is transparent, that people are put in the right departments where they should be under the right budget. So hopefully, we can have that dialogue here in the next couple of months and how that would set up. So with that promise of that dialogue, I vote aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on substitute Bill number 1 for Bill number 136, there are five ayes.
Very well, substitute Bill number 1 for number 136 is finally passed.
Bill number 151, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
I move for final passage of Bill number 151. Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Uh, no.
Councilmember Clancy?
Before I cast my vote, this is something that I have spent a lot of time scrutinizing, and this was a proposal that was first, I guess the RFP was first posted during our previous administration, and I've come to the conclusion that I think our priorities are a little bit different now when it comes to the services and the rates, particularly with those services that we're charging to inmates. I've been moved by a lot of the testimony we've heard from some of the folks who have been impacted by the services at our Justice Center, and with that, I vote no.
Councilmember Tracus?
I've agonized over this vote for a number of weeks now, and at the end of the day, even though I'm the technical sponsor, I have more questions than I have answers with respect to the provision of this service. So I'm just not at a place right now where I can vote yes for this bill, so I'm going to vote no.
Councilmember Harder.
I too have some reservations, and hopefully, we can have a dialogue and talk about this going forward, whether this bill comes back up or not. I vote no.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on Bill number 151, there are four noes and one aye.
Bill number 151 has failed to finally pass.
Bill number 165, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill number 165.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on Bill number 165, there are five ayes.
Bill number 165 is finally passed.
Bill number 166, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move for final passage to Bill number 166. Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on Bill number 166, there are five ayes.
Bill number 166 is finally passed.
Bill number 167, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill number 167.
Second. Roll call.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on Bill number 167, there are five ayes.
Bill number 167 is finally passed.
Bill number 168, introduced by Councilmember Clancy.
I move for final passage of Bill number 168.
Aye, I mean, second, sorry.
Roll call.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on Bill number 168, there are five ayes.
Very well, Bill number 168 has finally passed.
Bill number 174, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move for final passage of Bill number 174.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on Bill number 174, there are five ayes.
Bill number 174 has finally passed.
Bill number 175, introduced by Councilmember Tracus.
Move for final passage of Bill number 175.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilmember Fitch?
Aye.
Councilmember Gray?
Aye.
Councilmember Clancy?
Aye.
Councilmember Tracus?
Aye.
Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Presiding Officer, on Bill number 175, there are five ayes.
Bill number 175 has finally passed.
We have no resolutions this evening, sir, so we will move to unfinished business. Under unfinished business, item number 1, 3rd District.
Please hold on the order of business. So ordered.
Item number 2, 3rd District.
Please hold on the order of business. So ordered.
Item number 3, 4th District. Please hold.
So ordered.
Item number 4?
On this one, I'm going to ask that we hold it and wait for the recommendation from the Public Improvements Committee pursuant to today's hearing, and that'll be the order.
Item number 5, 4th District.
I think we should hold this one as well.
Very well, so ordered.
Item number 6?
At this point, I'm going to state for the record that I believe all the council members have had an opportunity to meet with Ms. Orwick personally, either in small groups or one-on-one, and based on that, I'm going to receive, file, and the appointment be approved as recommended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 7?
The same set of circumstances as applying to Mr. Wilson as well, and so for that reason, I'm going to receive, file, and the appointment be approved as recommended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 8?
Receive, file, and hold, I'm sorry, receive, file, and the county council will be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that would be the order.
Can we go back to number 3?
Unfinished business, ma'am?
Number 3, um-
My finished business.
Okay.
I need to go ahead and drop it on the order.
Very well, so item number 3 will be dropped, and that will be the order.
And then moving on to new businesses, Presiding Officer, we have four prepared orders this
I move for the adoption of Order Number 1, and like, 2, and Order Number 3, and Order Number 4.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries, orders number 1, 2, 3, and 4 are adopted.